Let's please take our seats. All right, good evening and welcome to our regular scheduled business meeting. We will have the invocation by Reverend Wayne Clark Senior Pastor at Total Renewal Church of God in Rex. It'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would, please stand with me.
Good evening Chairman, members of the board. Let's be agreed. Our Father and our God, we first give you honor because you deserve it, Lord. We thank you for an opportunity to just come before you, God, and handle the business of this county. And God, we want to take a brief moment just to remember those that were involved in the situation in Charlottesville, Virginia, Father. Lord, we do not want our county to be a county of hate. We do not want any place to be a place of hate, Father. And so as we just remember them, God, we ask today for your wisdom. We ask today, God, for your guidance. We ask for your supervision, Father God. You said, God, in your word, that there is no government or no rule that has set up that you have not set up, Father. And so as our people come together this evening to handle the business of this county, God, we just want your wisdom. We want your guidance, Lord. We want you to give understanding where understanding is needed, Father. Bring peace when peace is needed, Father God. Just have your way in this meeting, God. Bless this community, Father, as we seek to work together to move this county forward, Lord. Help us to remember that we are all connected. And so as the business of this county moves forward, bless the commissioners as they handle the business. Bless those under them, Lord, the county manager, God, the lawyers, Lord, the fire chief, Lord, all that's involved in making this county everything that it is and everything that it can be. And bless the citizens of this county to support and undergird our commissioners. Father, we thank you and we praise you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Good evening and welcome to the August 15, 2017 Regular Business Meeting. The first order of business is the adoption of the agenda. I would first ask the board if we could change the order. Item number six, the monthly purchases for July 2017, if we can move that to the first item under number eight, under Central Services.
Is there a motion to change?
No, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Does the board have any amendments? Here and now, Wayne, we have a motion to adopt the agenda with the approved amendment.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It's unanimous.
We have three sets of minutes for approval this evening. I'll take the approval of the August 1, 2017 Regular Business Meeting Minutes and the August 1, 2017 6:30 PM Public Hearing Minutes first.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Probably move the second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Miss, I'm gonna abstain from the 11 AM due to my absence.
One abstention.
Yes, I was going to call that one separately.
Oh, I thought you just called them both at the same time.
No, I did the 6:30 PM in the Regular Business Meeting Minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I got them backwards. Okay, you sure did.
Okay, so for clarification. For clarification purposes, Madam Clerk, what are we voting on?
The August 1 Regular Business Meeting Minutes and the August 1 6:30 PM Public Hearing Minutes.
Okay, so that was unanimous.
Okay. Now we'll have a motion for the August 1, 2017, the 11 o'clock AM meeting.
Is there a motion?
No move, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
One abstention.
Two abstentions.
It passes.
I see, because they're in different order.
Next, the board has one proclamation to present for this evening, recognizing North Clayton High School for creating an app that will diagnose the safety of school buses in the Clayton County School Community as presented by Commissioner Hambrick. If the students and staff would please come forward at this time as the commissioners join you for the presentation of the proclamation.
And Superintendent and all, we have our superintendent here tonight also.
Oh, three, one, two, and three. Again, one, two, and three. Last time, one, two, and three. Very good.
Hold on, we don't play video first before the proclamation is ready.
This is the AR Academy for Clayton County Schools and it is going to set these students into the future with many jobs and especially like the world.
What we challenge students to do here in North Clayton High School is to transform the way that school buses here are maintained.
We're using a program called Unity and that's been working our firsthand experience on building its path. So our goal is to hold up their tablet phone up to the engine, to the bus, and it gives you a full diagnostic just to make it easier instead of having to go over seven sheets of paper.
And with this new technology, augmented reality, this will speed up that documentation and it will show good verifications that it's been done properly.
We set our expectations high and we did not waver. And more importantly, we leveraged our key partnerships in business and industry.
In many career fields, one of the core requirements is for students to basically simulate what they're going to do in real life.
Firstly, I am just elated that I've been able to give my students an opportunity to see another side of technology, to see the cutting edge.
With this type of fundamental training, these kids can definitely accelerate in the industry. Really proud of what they do today.
I think that this is a great experience for all of us.
Today's internet is basically mixed reality. It is gonna need a few shots, though I guess coming at fast and everything.
And I'll debate anyone who says because of this challenge, our students are not better equipped for STEM careers today, tomorrow, and beyond.
And the proclamation reads, Clayton County honors the CTAE students of North Clayton High School, whereas Clayton County Public Schools CCPS has successfully launched a new app called the Augmented Reality School Bus Inspection, where assistance with inspection and maintenance of school buses can be done within Clayton County School Districts. And whereas, the creators of the new app include Career, Technology, Agriculture, and Education, CTAE students of the North Clayton High School Programming Pathway, the Clayton County Public Schools Transportation Department, and the Flying Classroom STEM, as well as in partnership with Spinner Active. And whereas, with augmented and virtual reality on the rise, the Programming Pathway students from North Clayton High School designed the app to help streamline inspections and effectively train employees on the inspection process based on a 25-point measuring system and seven focus areas. And whereas, the Clayton County Board of Commissioners is honored to recognize the CTAE students of North Clayton High School and commend them for their commitment and dedication to the creation of the Augmented Reality School Bus Inspection App. Those students include DeShawn Hicks, Mylana Walker, Suzie Ziwu, Vi Pout, Sapatisari, Carlos Bermudez-Guero, Cody Sray, Jasmine Lee, Minor Ikhkar, DeShawn Baines, Darian Thomas, Carla Gutierrez, Felipe Watson, Camille Taylor. Now therefore I, Gail B. Hambrick, Commissioner, on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby recognize and honor the CTAE students of North Clayton High School and congratulate them and the Clayton County Public School System for the implementation of the new Augmented Reality School Bus Inspection App. In witness thereof, I appear and to set my hand and call the Seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this 15th day of August in the year 2017. Gail B. Hambrick, Commissioner.
Before they sit down, I have a proclamation for each student, but I would like to hear from our new superintendent, Dr. Morcey.
I want formally introduce everyone to our school superintendent, Dr. Mor- McCree.
Morcey. King. I do it right. I've got Morcey. I'm here. Let's give him a round of applause.
Thank you, Chairman. Good evening, everyone, to all of our commissioners for this great honor. We have our board member, Ms. Goree here. Of course, to the principal, Mr. Farmer, to, of course, Mr. Law. Where are you, Mr. Law? His students, the teacher, give him a hand. To Dr. Chilis, who basically just came to the, came to us with the idea and worked with Mr. Walker and Mr. Thompson to make it a reality. And most of all, to our students, you all, let's give them a hand. What you see here today is just an example of the high performance that is occurring in our district and that will continue to occur in our district. Make no mistake, this will not be the last time you see our students produce a product such as this. As you saw in the video, it's top-notch all the way. Takes a high degree of intelligence to do it. Our students are very intelligent. So we appreciate the opportunity. I'm elated for the honor to be the new superintendent, to really take a little bit of credit for this project, just a little bit, because I think it started before I became a superintendent, didn't it? But most of all, just to give our students this opportunity. They deserve this and so much more. They deserve this. And if we don't lift up our children, please, please tell me, who will come into this community and lift up our children?
No one.
No one. So we, it's our responsibility to work as adults position to lift up our children. And if they, if they were doing something wrong, we'd talk about it, wouldn't we? So let's give ourselves something to talk about. They're worthy. Let's give it up for them. So, and Commissioner, I got the invite. I was doing a critical conversation meeting with teachers and when I saw your invite, I said, if I answer that, I gotta go. My, my wife made some roast for me to come home to and she was expecting me to come home, so I told her, I said, I gotta go, because my children are being recognized. So I just want you to know that, thank you for sending me the invite. I'm glad to be here and honored to be here standing with our children because they are more than worthy. More than worthy. Thank you all.
The board will now consider the request of Director of Central Services, Carol Rogers.
Ms. Rogers, please take them all together except for number nine, item nine, RFB 17-106.
Okay, great. Good evening. First item I want to present is for the monthly reports of contracts and contract modifications or changes that have been authorized by the Director of Central Services. This report is made pursuant to the new section in our purchasing code, which is 4-205D, and this is a part of the Clayton County ordinance. The following contracts were executed through Central Services. The first was on July the 1st, 2017, an annual maintenance schedule agreement in the amount of $4,923.89 with IBM located in Smyrna, Georgia. This was for RFQ 15-35, which is maintenance service for the portions of the Clayton County E911 Communications Computer System. The next contract that was awarded was for a formal contract in the amount of $47,568 with GT Distributors of Georgia, Inc., located in Rossville, Georgia. This was executed on 7/21/2017 for RFQ 17-135, which is exchange and purchase of weapons for the Clayton County Police Department. The request is for you to approve the report concerning these expenses. Next item is the items for recommendation of award for the board approval. The first one is recommendation for amendment of annual contract, RFP 14-16, which is the inmate healthcare for Clayton County Prison, which is an annual contract. The recommendation is to amend the contract with Correct Health, Inc., Correct Health Clayton LLC located in Atlanta, Georgia, for the annual contract price increase of 4.7%, which is based on the Consumer Price Index for all urban consumers. The renewal period is July the 15th, 2017, through July the 4th, 2018. There is one remaining renewal on the contract. The board of commissioners approved the award on July the 15th. The price increase of 4.7% will equal a total of $9,725,000 for the year, which brings the total of the contract to $2,000, $206,952.62. Funding is available through the existing medical service account, the Department of Vendor Renewal Acceptance, and the amendment to the agreement for the above referenced projects have been attached for your review and information. Next item is recommendation for award of RFB 17-07, which is Construction Materials Testing and Inspection Soul Borings for Clayton County, Georgia, which is an annual contract. The recommendation for award is to award the overall lowest responsive and responsible bidder, meeting the specifications, which is Nova Engineering and Environmental LLC located in Kennesaw, Georgia. Funding is available through the 2004, 2009, 2015 SPOSS funds and other various funding sources. Next item is recommendation for award of RFP 17-62, which is Digital Message Display Boards and Electronic Scoreboards for the Clayton County, Georgia. This is for the Parks and Recreation Department. The recommendation for award is to the overall lowest responsive and responsible proponent, meeting the specifications. This is for the Sign Store Online, Inc., located in Macon, Georgia. This is a revenue-generated contract, which is at no cost to the county. The county will receive 15% of the yearly funds for the first year. For the second year, it will be 20%. And for the years three and four, it will be 25%. Next item is a recommendation for award of RFB 17-89, which is Land Boundary and Topographical Surveys for Clayton County, Georgia. This is an annual contract. The recommendation for award is to the overall lowest responsive and responsible bidder, meeting the specifications, which is Falcon Design Consultants LLC located in Stockbridge, Georgia. Funding is available through the 2004, 2009, 2015 SPOSS funds and other various funding sources. Next item is the recommendation for RFQ 17-154, which is for Microsoft Enterprise Licensing for Windows and Office Software. This will be purchased from Dell, Inc., located in Round Rock, Texas, using a Georgia statewide contract. The total amount of the project is $330,582.60. Funding is available through the Department of Information Technology, FY18 budget. Next item is recommendation for purchase of 17-158, which is Net Motion Wireless Persistence. This is for the AVL project. The recommendation is to purchase licensing from Endpoint Technologies located in El Segundo, California, and the amount of $115,046.56. Funding is available through the Department's E911, FY8, 2018, other contract service budget. Next item is recommendation for approval for us to utilize a fuel cooperative to purchase gasoline and diesel fuel by fleet maintenance. This is for use by various county departments. The recommendation is to utilize the North Georgia Fuel Cooperative to purchase fuel from, the first primary awardee is James River Solution LLC located in Ashland, Virginia, Mansville Oil Company of Gainesville, Inc., located in Gainesville, Georgia, which is a secondary, and Petroleum Traders Corporation located in Fort Wayne, Indiana, which is the third awardee. Funding is available through the respective user department's general fund account. Next item is the recommendation to rescind contract, RFB 17-106, which is resurfacing of the tennis courts for the Clayton County Parks and Recreation. The recommendation is to rescind, to rescind the contract awarded to the Net Results Sports Marketing, Inc., located in Marietta, Georgia. The vendor is not able to comply with the scope of services as listed in the RFP and hold their bid amount. The award was approved by the Clayton County Board of Commissioners on July the 5th, 2017. The department recommendation is attached for your review. I request for you to approve the recommendations, authorize the chairman, his designee, to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the intent of the contracts, and to authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget accordingly.
Is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second? Probably move the second, or are there any questions on any of the items?
Yes, sir. Yes, item number six, and I know I looked at the others, but we just moved 911 under PD and we've made several purchases for 911. How does this purchase correlate with all the other purchases that we've already made? Well, it's just... In terms of the system? I don't know. And I'm sorry, Ms. Rogers, there may be something that we have to get, I don't, maybe the COO or somebody. I'm sorry. And I should've asked, that's one I forgot.
Yes, ma'am. The AVL, this is still part of that Automatic Vehicle Locator, all the software packages associated before we moved them to PD. All this is, is still the continuous purchase associated with that, that overall technology purchase.
Okay. But let me ask you this, why wasn't it originally approved in the overall? Why do we keep adding on and adding on? It seems like there's always something new and something new. And because I'm not technologically savvy, I just, I have concern about it getting pushed through and pushed through. It seemed like it would've been all-in-one package deal when we first approved it, but I'm noticing it comes up on the agenda quite often.
Well, I guess the best way of answering that, there's certain parts of the equipment that would not be part of the entire package, so therefore it would be, it would be procured differently. So that's the reason why you see them come in as a separate form of a purchase request or post, who had been all blanketed at all at one time.
I got you. But was it a part of the original plan or is it just something we know we needed additionally?
Yeah, we just knew we needed additionally at some point in time and it's just coming in a separate form of a request to the board.
Okay.
Right.
Is there a way, and not for you, Mr. COO, but in a case like this, is there a way that we can have presented to us what the entire package is gonna be so we don't feel like, in the sense I'm being nickel and dime? I don't know if that sounds right, the wrong way. I'm not really trying to give it an overture, I just don't know any better way to say it.
We can do one better.
Have to be careful about that.
We can provide a presentation to the board, the overall AVL, what the impact will be with this whole new technology, and it'd probably be best we just do a whole presentation to the board so you know specifically what it is.
Okay. And let me just say it again, because I just, I'm not technologically savvy, so I'm, I'm having to rely on the information and just see, it's an Endpoint Technology PCM Company, GS35, I don't know.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? All right, here and now, those in favor, aye.
And on item number six, can I, I can't abstain, can I? That's fine.
Any, anyone opposed?
I probably should've held it.
Anyone opposed? Here and now, those, it's unanimous. Thank you, and go to the number nine.
And the last item is recommendation for award of 17, of RFB 17-106, which is resurfacing of the tennis courts for the Clayton County Parks and Recreation. The recommendation is to award to the overall, at this point, lowest responsive and responsible bidder, meeting our specifications, which is Signature Tennis Courts, Inc., located in Woodstock, Georgia, and the total of $116,500. Funding is available through the Parks and Recreation General Park Improvement SPOSS Fund. The request is for you to approve the recommendation, authorize the chairman or his designee to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the intent of the contract, and to authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget accordingly.
Is there a motion? I'll make the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
I have a question.
Mr. Anderson.
Maybe I should study this more, but the quote's safe, $114,000, but the request is for $116,500. I know this is the second, but where am I missing? What is that?
There's option items that we can take with that, so they bid it out, separate items that were optional to the resurfacing of the tennis courts, so that would be additional cost for that.
Above and beyond this quote page that's attached to it?
Yes, mhm.
What are those?
So the optional items that we have is for stripe regulation, pickle lines, and then we also have the option...
For what?
And outlet, the parks and recreation.
Like the other game?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Pickleball is a type of tennis.
I know all about it, I talked about it a year or two ago. Thank you. Thank, that, that's all.
Any other questions? All right, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
The board will consider request of Chief Financial Officer Ramona Bivens.
Please take them together unless a board member wants to take one separately.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chair and Commissioners. I have nine items for your consideration this evening. Budget Amendment 2-5 is for the Fire Fund, is to carry forward and amend in funding in the amount of $172,351 for subgrade repair and concrete slab replacement at Fire Station Number One, as approved on June 6, 2017 Board Meeting. 2-6 is for Federal Narcotics Condemnation Fund, to amend in funds in the amount of $34,770 to purchase a 2017 Chrysler 300 for the Sheriff's Office. Budget Amendment 4-1 is for 2015 SPOSS, to amend in $4 million to provide funding for the Trade Center and Small Business Incubator Project. Budget Amendment 4-2 is for 2015 SPOSS, to amend the budget in the amount of $300,000 to provide funding for the Welcome to Clayton County signage project. Budget Amendment 4-3 is for 2015 SPOSS, to amend the budget in the amount of $400, I'm sorry, $4 million to provide funding for the VIP Complex renovation at International Park. Budget Amendment 4-4 is for 2015 SPOSS, to amend the budget in the amount of $200,000 to provide funding for the TV Station remodel project. Budget Amendment 4-5 is for SPOSS 2009, to appropriate funds from the SPOSS fund balance in the amount of $25,000 to provide funding for site work and paving of walking and biking trails at the Rivers Edge Green Space property. Budget Amendment 4-6... Budget Amendment four dash six is for two thousand nine Splosts, to appropriate funds from Splosts Fund balance in the amount of five hundred thirteen thousand dollars to provide funding for the purchase of undeveloped land in the Spivey Club subdivision to be used for phase two of the International Park Multi-Use Trail. And Budget Amendment four dash seven is for two thousand nine Splosts, to appropriate funds from the Splosts Fund balance in the amount of thirty-two thousand dollars to provide funding for the purchase of land along Walt Stevens Road to be used for phase three of the International Park Multi-Use Trail. That's all I have.
All right, is there a motion? I'll make the motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
All right, any questions on any of the items?
I do.
Mr. Anderson.
I think it's item number four, the three hundred thousands for the Welcome to Clayton signage project. If I recollect, that was, that was one of the Splosts Committee recommendations from about four years ago. Since we're appropriating it now, have we done anything? I mean, is there signage that this board approved, are there logos this board approved, are there locations this board approved? Why is this before us now versus next month or last month, and how come we haven't got a plan before we funded? I'm scared that there are going to be signs that pop up that, well, I've never seen and constituents might not like.
So it's Ms. Thurman, one of the, Ms. Bivins, I'm sorry, I didn't, she's no longer married.
Her cellphone still says Thurman.
Ms. Bivins was bringing forth quite a few budget amendments, Commissioner. The spirit behind that is that because we're looking to really put a lot of projects up, doing a lot of vertical projects, the deal was to go ahead and allocate funding for those projects. The reality with the Welcome to Clayton County signs, we have a memorandum that we certainly could provide to the board, but what we've done is identified multiple locations as it pertains to entryways into the county to contemplate for those entry signs to go in. Part of that project would be to have a small branding or communication element attached to that, so therefore that company will be responsible for telling us what may be the proper font or the proper color for the signage. Once we get that done, we'll bring that back in the form of a recommendation to the board to ensure that you all approve that, but what we want to do is go ahead and allocate the funding primarily on the A and E side, so therefore the small portion to include font size and color would at least be part of the first vetting process, and then we then bring that back and forth as a form of a recommendation to the board for further consideration.
Would you be willing to share that MOU that identified the sites, the entrance sites of the county that you just mentioned?
Yes, sir.
That we can have enough lead time to get our head around it?
Not a problem, yes, sir.
Thank you.
I can make sure that's done right after we finish the board meeting.
No further questions.
Yes, I actually have a couple of questions, don't go anywhere. The first one is, and I'm glad to hear, believe it or not, about the signage, because I believe it was four years ago we discussed it, however, I think we've talked about it, and it was mentioned earlier, we have not put any meat or potatoes behind branding for our county, so would we be able to do that? Because what we've done is we've approved to change a website, we're changing all of our systems, we're changing everything in the county, and which is what we need to do. However, for whatever reason, and I'm gonna say it, Chairman, the board collectively has not put the meat and potatoes behind branding. As a small business owner, and those that are in business, and it's not so much to you, Mr. COO, but we know we've got to have branding, we got to know where we're going, we have to have messaging. So what are we putting on the websites? You know, are we going to be able to have? Now, honestly, if we're going to be able to have a portion of that to come up and help us with the brand, that would be excellent, but I just cannot fathom, it's not personal, but it is just, it fathoms me to think that this county with such great opportunity we have before us, that we don't put time, effort, and investment behind branding. So is that going to be incorporated? Or could it be?
Well, what I presented before you, the branding component is really dealing with the Welcome to Clayton County signs, however, we're open if the board would like for us to explore branding in a more comprehensive way, we're certainly open to that.
Right, okay, so the example I'm gonna give, City of Jonesboro just rebranded. They know the direction, they listen to the people, they know what the people wanted to see, and they have a brand, One Jonesboro, one community, I'm able to spout it out. So with this, I'm good with it, but this board has got to ante up and put some support behind branding. We've got to make that happen, or else what are we going to do? Just put the county seal? That doesn't mean a lot, you know what I mean?
Didn't we discuss Hearn and Company a while back, Jonesworthy or somebody?
Yes, sir.
And we shot that down, didn't we?
The board wanted to contemplate some additional direction, but yes, we did bring forth a branding company at one point in time.
Which, I'm sorry, Chair.
Might need to, well, no, not might, we need to revisit that again, in terms of putting that out.
And I think that was at the end of Commissioner Rook's term, and I think the consensus of the board was with a new commissioner coming on, we kind of wanted to wait on that.
Yes, ma'am, that is correct, that was the discussion.
It wasn't like it was just, no, we don't want to do it or anything like that, so.
Well, I'm here, so can we have a conversation? Can it go back on the agenda? Let's make it happen, because we got to have some direction, because if we just spend money and not have messaging, I'm concerned. I know Jason is going to do a great job on his website, but you got to, we have to know the right things to put on that website to attract people, and I'm trying to be real careful, because in most counties, all of that ties back into economic development. So I will tell you that we got to, we got to make it happen, so.
So let's revisit doing our-
But I have another question, thank you, Mr. COO, but another question is in regards to, there was one other thing on here, the trail, and I know that how we say what goes on in a commissioner's district, but we're going to spend twenty-five thousand on Rivers Edge, it's been waiting for forever, but we've had chunk after chunk after chunk, and I see it's oh nine versus, no, this is coming out of oh nine too. But we're spending so much in Spivey, and I understand that we say, okay, but we have multi-million dollar homes in Spivey. Well, at the end of the day, everybody pay taxes, and whether it's a lot coming out of one area, or it's collectively coming out of another area, it just seems some disparaging numbers in there for me. It's not, again, it's just, it's just me looking at it, and I got to go back to the people of Rivers Edge and be able to answer to them.
And ask them how much we bought Rivers Edge for a year ago.
I understand that, trust me, I know that, that we're not trying to play tit for tat. All I'm saying is, just like we waited for me to get on the board for other things, that's something I inherited, but at the end of the day, we got to figure it out. We got to figure it out, and we got to make sure that we're putting the same effort in one area, because I'm getting a lot of complaints about snakes, about issues down at Rivers Edge, and you've done a great job trying to combat it, but I just want to keep that in mind. So, and don't take it personal, I think what we got to do is stop taking it personal, and this is a business. This is a business of the county, business of the people, and let's make good business decisions. I will always stand by that.
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner, if I may, so the deal there is pertaining to the priorities of the projects, the oh nine projects, as we talked about trail development, the deal was to look at Spivey Phase One, Phase Two, and Phase Three as the primary rollout of the oh nine program. The goal was always for funding for the two thousand fifteen program to fund the Rivers Edge project.
Gotcha.
Of course, we're still waiting on collections, because the two thousand fifteen collections have been kind of slow, but the spirit behind that, again, is that the two thousand fifteen program was to fund the Splosts program down at Rivers Edge, and we're still waiting for some of those fundings to come in for that, so that has been the plan from the very beginning, to look at, to build out from Spivey, then work our way further south based upon funding as it came available.
I got you, thank you. And one more question on the Small Business Incubator Project, who's going to be over that project, or what department? Trade Center and Small Business Incubator Project?
Well, so the Small Business Incubator will be part of the now Economic Development Department, the workers retention will be part of IT.
I asked that for a reason, because when I first got on this board, I was approached by those previously on the Economic Development Board about what was the holdup, and I just wanted to be stated that now we're going to be moving forward, and we don't even have a board that's fully staffed or fully working. So, and I know I'm probably going to get a lot of flack for it, but I think we're going to need to take item three separately and hold it until we can have the right, until we have all the pieces in place to make it happen, because I don't feel comfortable dumping four million dollars over into economic development when I've got a lot of questions about where it's run right now. And that's just to the chair.
All right, any other questions? So we're going to take number three separately. Any others?
There was a motion and a second, so there has to be a motion and a second to amend the motion.
I make a motion that we amended, I think I stated it, I said, Mr. Chairman.
You did, you did.
Can we amend it?
I'll second your motion. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Okay, three, three, two, a foul.
So can I make one more comment? So we got to understand, what we're doing is handing over four million dollars to a department or area that is being, that has the chair as our board of commissioner, and it's not fully filled, and we're going to give them four million dollars for incubator that's been held up for the longest. I'm going on record, that is a concern.
Okay, so going back to the original motion on all of the items, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Y'all be making me want to abstain, but yes, yeah.
It's unanimous, next.
Thank you.
I expect a better.
County Attorney Jack Hancock.
Mr. Chairman, I have eight items for consideration from various departments. The first one is a request for the Board of Commissioners to consider a stream buffer variance request for the Trace Wood Apartments development. I'd like to take it separately if you'd allow, because it requires a public hearing, and so we'll need to see if there's any comment regarding that. But it's a request that the board grant a variance, the county ordinance requires a fifty-foot undisturbed buffer and an additional twenty-five-foot impervious setback. The total amount of disturbance within the stream buffer area is approximately ten thousand and fifteen square feet in this project. This is a project that is being undertaken by the county to demolish a public nuisance pursuant to an order of the court, which is the Trace Wood Apartments, and they, and this variance is necessary in order to allow the county department to complete that demolition. In addition, once it is completed, then it will be fully vegetated again. So what the request is, is for a variance from the existing county ordinance to allow the full demolition of this public nuisance, and the code does require a public hearing on that issue.
Okay, so, you have some? So we're going to take a public hearing at this time. Is there anybody who's against this variance request, reference to Trace Wood?
How can I be for or against?
We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna be in order, please, sir. If you want to speak on it, then you need to come take the mic. If you want to find out more about it, then you'll have to do so after the meeting. Come on, sir, if you want to make a comment.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, how can I give any public comment when I know nothing about what's going on with this, when it wasn't printed in the paper, or given any notice to what's, what's going to take place here? A lot of times I'm blindsided here, so this is what I'm saying. I can't speak for it or against it, because I know nothing about it. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Anybody else like to speak in reference to, for, or against the variance request? All right, here in, public hearing will end.
Mr. Chairman, for the board's edification and understanding, all of the required notices were provided for this variance request. The purpose of it is to complete the demolition of a property that has been determined to be a nuisance, and that, that is, it is going to be restored, but it cannot be completed because of, because of changes in the ordinance since the time the property was originally constructed. In order for us to fully, the county to fully demolish it, they have to be able to encroach upon what is now considered to be an undisturbed buffer. It will be restored, according to the department. That's what they're asking the right to do.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, Chair.
So did y'all understand that now, by what we stated? Okay, and, because I do realize, and I said it early to some folks, sometimes we just need it in plain vernacular, so can, can you put it in plain vernacular for the phone?
I'll try to, yes, ma'am, and I-
Just as simple as possible.
Trace Wood Apartments was determined to be a public nuisance, and the county was authorized to demolish that property. At the time it was constructed, it, since the time it was constructed, the county's buff, undisturbed buffer requirement has expanded by, I believe, twenty-five feet. So in order now to encroach on that area for the demolition, the Transportation and Development Authority and the people that we've contracted with to do that work has to get your approval. So what they're asking for is your approval to encroach upon what would now be an undisturbed area, or what would be required to be an undisturbed area. It's not undisturbed because part of the development's in.
Okay, I'm gonna do it for you. Bottom line is, we're going to tear down some trees that, according to the ordinance, we're not supposed to be tearing them down, and we're just going to do it so that we can go ahead and clear everything out, correct?
And we're gonna put-
That's what we needed, so, because we're, basically, our laws say that we can't do it, but in order to get this project cleaned up, we're going to end up tearing down a few more trees.
Mr. Garber, we're not going to have outbursts, sir. Please, please have a seat, sir. Thank you.
And I'm sorry, I'm not trying to be out of order, but I will say this, we just got to make sure folks understand what we're doing, as simple as that. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Hancock, please, please proceed.
Yes, sir, you want to go ahead and take the rest of them at the same time, sir.
Yes.
Item eleven is a request from Clayton County Senior Services Department that the Board of Commissioners accept a fourteen thousand dollar grant for Meals on Wheels of America, made possible through a donation from the Kellogg Twenty-Five Year Employees Fund. Further, authorize the chairman to execute the agreement and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the agreement, to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, all as may be required under the terms of the agreement. Item twelve is a request from the Police Department that the Board of Commissioners accept title to a two thousand and seven Chrysler three hundred seized for forfeiture by the Clayton County Police Department Drug Task Force. Authorize the vehicle for county usage and assign the vehicle to the Clayton County Police Drug Task Force. Further, authorize Central Services, Fleet Maintenance, and the chief financial officer to take all actions necessary to achieve the intent of this request. Item thirteen is a request from Clayton County Fire and Emergency Services Department that the Board of Commissioners authorize entering into a memorandum of understanding with the Atlanta Regional Commission for the acceptance of grant funds for sustaining law enforcement operations and sustaining existing capabilities for our interoperability program Clayton County's requested. Thirty-one thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight dollars and ninety-eight cents for enhancement to law enforcement capabilities, and seventeen thousand, five hundred and sixty-one dollars and ten cents for the enhancement of interoperability capabilities. Therefore, bringing a total grant award request to forty-nine thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars and eight cents, no county match, is required. Further, the request is to authorize the chairman to execute the agreement and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the agreement, to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, all as may be required under the terms of the agreement. Item fourteen is a request from the Department of Parks and Recreation that the Board of Commissioners approve recommended rates by the Parks and Recreation Department for the special facility use requests submitted by the Rotary Club of Clayton County to host a series of events for international college students at the Clayton County International Park on September eighth through the tenth, two thousand seventeen. The Rotary Club is requesting that the special event fee be waived. Further, authorize the chairman to execute the agreement and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the agreement, to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, all as may be required under the terms of the agreement. Item fifteen, the title is, is not completely accurate, there is no necess- There is no necess, there's no necessity to rescind a license agreement. This is simply the Parks and Recreation Department's request that the Clayton County Board of Commissioners approve a license agreement with Drinking Partners LLC to utilize the Clayton County International Park for bike Nick on Sunday, September tenth, two thousand and seventeen. Further, authorize the chairman to execute the agreement and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the agreement to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, all as may be required under the terms of the agreement. Item sixteen is a request from the Court Administration Department that the Board of Commissioners grant a speci, special facility use permit to empower mock trial to host the two thousand and seventeen mock trial competition, the Southern Showdown competition at the Harold R. Banky Justice Center on September twenty-third through the twenty-fourth, two thousand and seventeen. And item seventeen is a request from the Planning and Zoning Division that the Board of Commissioners approve for each zoning advisory group and Board of Zoning Appeals member to be paid a stipend of fifty dollars. The purpose of the legislative request is provide the zoning advisory group and Board of Zoning Appeals a monthly site stipend for gas and mileage, for site visits, attendance at public hearings, planning and zoning application reviews, excuse me, for the comprehensive plan, future land use map, zoning map, text amendments, review and recommendation on zoning co-regulations, recommending reclassifications of property zoning, reviewing and approving subdivision preliminary and final plans, reviewing conceptual site plans, special studies, and other types of planning and zoning applications. That's all we have.
All right, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'll make a motion, if you don't mind, that, uh, we approve with the, with the amendment that number fourteen, the Lake Spivey Rotary Club, the club requested the entire special event fee be waived. I'd like to make a motion, we approve all of these with that amendment?
Say that again, they are asking to have the total fee.
It's seven hundred and ten dollars. They're, they're, they're asking to have it waived?
Right. It's requesting special event fee be waived.
Yes, sir. The, the, the request before us is that the department recommends a reduced rate. I'm simply asking that the whole, that's per-
Okay, you're just stipulating that it needs to be, you want the-
I'd say it's be waived.
Well, they're asking for it to be waived, the recommendation is to just lower it to seven fifty. All I'm saying is, let's accept their request to waive it.
Total waive.
Yeah.
I got you. Okay, you made the motion, and there was a second on it?
Yeah, second.
All right. Probably move a second. Any questions on any of the items? All right, hearing, uh, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pass, this is unanimous.
Did you need executive session on litigation and real estate matters, Mr. Chairman?
The next four items are board appointments. The first is the appointment to the Board of Appeals zoning to fill the expiring term of Demont Davis. This term is three years, expiring on September second, two thousand and twenty. This is a full board appointment. Are there any nominations?
To reappoint, Mr. Davis?
I'll suck in the motion, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
The next two appointments are to the Mental Health Development of Disabilities and Addictive Diseases Community Service Board. First, to fill the expiring term of Dr. Alika Anderson. This is a three-year term, expiring on September sixteenth, two thousand and twenty. This is a full board appointment, are there any nominations?
Is that the, can she be reappointed? Is this that board that you can only serve one time, or?
No, that, this is Mental Health Board.
Okay, well, I, um, offer motion to reappoint Dr. Anderson.
I'll suck in it, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
The next is also to fill the expiring term of Dr. Ansel Georgia Davis. This is a full board appointment, are there any nominations?
Well, can we, can we hold that? I have not spoken with him to see if he would like to continue to serve.
Okay, no problem. Go to the next.
Okay. Item number twenty-one, this is an appointment to the zoning advisory group to fill the expiring term of Larry Bussey. This term is three years, expiring on September second, two thousand and twenty. This is a full board appointment, are there any nominations?
Madam, uh, Madam Clerk, I'd like to recommend, uh, Mr. Arnold Goodson to that position.
Sarah Suckin.
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this does conclude this evening's agenda. If there is no further business to discuss, there was a request to go into executive session on real estate and litigation.
Is there a motion?
Can we get a point of privilege?
May, some moves?
No, we done. None of mine. I was just gonna tell you happy anniversary.
I'll suck in it, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Motion to reconvene. I'll suck in it, those in favor, aye. Opposed, it's unanimous, Mr. Hancock.
Mr. Chairman, three items for, uh, for consideration of the board. Uh, first of all, Madam Clerk, if you'd allow the record to reflect that in addition to real estate personnel, there, uh, real estate and litigation, there was one personnel matter that was discussed in the executive session. Uh, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, you had previously authorized us to resolve a pending lawsuit, uh, filed by Mr. James Cunningham against the county arising out of an automobile accident on Mar, on March the eighth of two thousand and sixteen at the intersection of North Main Street and Hunt Road in Incorporated City of Jonesboro. Uh, it was a lawsuit in which our, our driver was liable and Mr. Cunningham, or was responsible, excuse me, Mr. Cunningham was injured. We have, uh, obtained an executed settlement agreement from Mr. Cunningham under the terms you authorized. Uh, we need for you to approve that and to, uh, make it a part of the record, and we'll provide a copy of it to the clerk. We have, uh, res, you want me to take them all together?
Yes, please.
Resolution two thousand and seventeen fifty, fifty-nine is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to convey property to the City of Jonesboro to authorize the chairman to execute all the documents necessary to effectuate the transfer and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution. Provide effective data to this res-
I said an executive, no, that's separate.
No, ma'am, this is a different piece.
Okay, gotcha.
I think.
We're not going to, which one are you talking about?
I didn't hear you say, this is Key Street Park.
Okay, I apologize.
That's okay. Uh, to accomplish, necessary to accomplish the intent of the resolution to provide effective data to this resolution and for other purposes. And this is for a conveyance of real property known as, uh, Key Street Park. It is tax parcel zero six zero zero one A A oh oh one. And then finally, uh, we'd ask the board to authorize us to communicate with the National Museum of Commercial Aviation to terminate the existing lease agreement for property leased by them from the county and located, uh, in the exit ramp off of I seventy-five to CW Grant. They've notified the county that they're no longer able to, uh, use the property and have effectively turned it over. We, with your authority, will communicate with them and make, uh, give them a timeframe within which to remove the item, the, the property that is located on that. Uh, and then we'll, uh, once that, uh, property is back in the hands of the county and, uh, and has been cleared, um, the, there'll be a deed submitted to the chairman to transfer it to the, from the county to the Development Authority to allow them to facilitate a subsequent transfer and development of the property within that mountain sign here, Mountain View area. That's all I have, sir.
All right, do I have a motion?
Stand there.
Is there a suck?
Second.
Any questions on any of the items?
Yes, I did speak differently on that last, um, item that you read.
Okay.
So it should have been taken separately.
Okay.
And I think it should be taken separately to, to terminate the contract and then whether or not we convey it. Because I, we need to terminate the contract, but we don't, I don't, I don't need to vote on whether we convey it to Development Authority under the current Development Authority.
Okay, then, I'd be glad to-
Need to amend the motion?
Yeah, yeah, we got a motion in a second.
I stated it.
Need to amend the motion in order to, to remove that and consider it second, separately if you want, if you want to do that, as you're right.
Mr. Evanson, you made the motion.
I call the vote.
All right, hearing done. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
So we have some four one. Four one, it passes. This, uh, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll suck in. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous, good evening.